Good evening, everyone. We'll call a meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Said before our consent agenda, are there any changes or additions to this evening's meeting?
Yes, Your Honor, can I give a brief rag-bri report?
Okay, rag-bri report under committee reports. Then moving to our consent agenda, we have approval of minutes from the May 28 council meeting, a resolution for employment of the street department, Park and Rec Department, Logan Apartments, and wastewater. We also have approval of liquor licenses for come and go and Cafe Paradiso, approval of claims in the amount of $267,490.93. Move for approval. A move by Revulinski to approve consent agenda, second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Thank you. Next council, we'll move to our public appearances, and our first guest this evening is Lori Applegate from Alliant Energy, our customer service representative. Lori, good evening.
Good evening. You hear me okay? Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. I trust that you have one of these on your iPads?
We do have the report, yes.
Wonderful. I'm just gonna go over this, as well as a little recap of your hometown rewards program, after we get through the partnership assessment. And this is, you know, I come every year to give you a kind of an overview of how our company supports and interacts with you throughout the year. So this is based on 2012 data. So we'll just go through the economic development. In 2012, we assisted through the annual support of VITA, as well as support for LOIS, the database system, and Synchronist, at a cost of $1,550. The community support, which is Chamber of Commerce, it's our Alliant Energy Foundation, it's also local contributions that go to 501(c)(3)'s and (c)(6)'s, and that's in the amount of $5,399. And if you have questions as we go through this, just stop me, and I can elaborate further if you'd like. The environmental partnership program, which is a nice number this year, and that was 35,638, primarily 10,000 of it was 300 trees planted at the Jefferson County through Operation Relief. So that was a really nice grant that I would hope that you, you know, use that every year if you can.
Was that a drought relief, Lori, do you know?
No, it's just a, nope, it's just Operation Relief, so it goes to, it's through the DNR, program through the DNR, and they work through us for, so your county applied for it. So I wanted to add that, even though it's, you know, it's not city.
Right.
It certainly benefits. So that's a nice number as well. As far as energy efficiency impacts in 2012, you'll see there were 696 rebates to the number of $632,000, with a huge kilowatt hour impact of 5 million, almost 5.5, and the total term was 74,748. And I've kind of equivalent that out into metrics, tons per year, the number of vehicles that are taken off the road, the equivalent number of trees in a forest, as well as gallons of gas. So just to kind of give you a point of reference. As far as the community infrastructure, and these numbers, when I'm gonna talk about the partnership program, this is gonna break it down a little bit further, so I'll get more into impacts here in a moment. As far as community infrastructure, the electric gas investment that our company has invested in your community, $162,000. The natural gas infrastructure investment, $246,000. As far as taxes that we pay Fairfield Gas and Electric, $274,000, just for the city, and then Jefferson County taxes, $354,000. As far as the employment, in the Fairfield Operations Center, we employ 16 people from Fairfield and the surrounding area. So that's, that's just general terms, as far as all the different places, how we, you know, how we interact and touch your community. As you know, I have to say, as a company, Fairfield has been our golden child, let me say, for this hometown rewards program. So I applaud you, and all of the folks that have worked on it, you know, through the whole community, because it's really, now everybody wants to be like you, so. And that's kind of what, that was our goal, right? So, and as you know, you were awarded the 2013 Governor's Iowa Environmental Excellence Award, that will be presented on June 27th. So congratulations for that. I know we were also, we participated in your nomination for that. So first time we've ever been, had a community nominated to, and won, so.
Well, thank you, Lori, and we know that that really is a lot to do with the partnership with hometown rewards, and how successful that's been, so we share that with you. Thank you.
And, you know, another thing that you've done, you know, as you know, this is a three-year program, the hometown rewards program, and you have already knocked it out of the park. So congratulations for that, too. I think in you, as compared to the baseline of 2010, you already exceeded 8.5% in just the residential, and another 8% in the commercial and industrial. So, again, very good things. As far as marketing dollars for the hometown reward program, we spent $47,320 that were spent through the hometown rewards for your marketing efforts. So just kind of wanted to give you a kind of a highlight of how that's impacted your community, and what we've done to invest in those impacts, I guess.
Great, thank you very much. Lori, you have, on the number of rebates and the amount of the rebates, it is an impressive number, and its impacts are impressive also. And there was, we had quite a lot of solar photovoltaic development in the last 18 months, and I know that all of those projects were part of your rebate program. Everything else fall into the category of equipment and machinery, things like that that are changed?
Absolutely. And one of the big numbers here, the Performance Pipe did a big expansion, and so we ran that through a process improvement, which is why that 8% also was a reduction.
Right, yeah.
It was a pretty substantial rebate that they did. And I think Agroplastics maybe updated their lighting, so all those things fall into that. So it might be one rebate of the 697, you know, 696, but it was, you know, 3 million kilowatt hour reduction. So it is a culmination of residential, commercial, and industrial.
Great. Well, it's good to see the community performing this way, because that was the intention when we did our Go Green strategic plan, was to create a culture where people would look for all of those opportunities to conserve and without mandates, and it seems to be working pretty well.
Yep, it does. Congratulations.
Thanks.
And thank you very much for trying to make it.
Yes, any questions for Lori?
Thank you.
Lori, I do have a comment. This is a great report, it's kind of inspiring even. I appreciate, you know, the partnership that you had with us, have had with us, especially on the hometown rewards, and the rebate program is a great advantage, we really appreciate that. I can't help saying no, however, considering the multimillion dollar revenue that a client gets from our city residents, I would like to see a little more support for, I mean, you know, saying $1,500 for environmental, for economic development and community support, $5,300. We're a community that has, for instance, there's one, one of our employers is donating a million dollars towards our new park and recreate, our new swimming pool and recreation center. So we'd love to see Alliant step up a little more, considering how big of a player you are in our community. Now, we appreciate what you've done, but we'd like to see a little more.
I love it, John fundraising on the conversation here.
Actually, those are membership dues, those are things that are submitted to us.
Okay. Well, we can submit more if you want.
Yeah, I know, right now. Maybe that's something else. Yeah. And, you know, 501(c)(3)'s, we have, our foundation is, it's there for not bricks and mortar, but it's there for just about anything else. So certainly, if you have nonprofits in your community, that number can go up, you know.
Yeah, that was one of the things, John, that changed several years ago.
Right.
That we're no longer doing bricks and water projects, I recall.
Right.
Because at a point, there was a time when you were making donations towards those things.
And we don't want, the idea is we don't want to be the only thing, and there it sits, you know, because there's nothing else to back up. We also are gonna be part of that, your pool, isn't that what it is?
Pool and Rec Center.
Yeah, so we're gonna run that through our commercial construction program, which will be a very, very good, that's similarly to how we did the Performance Pipe expansion. So it bundles all those rebates together to get you the best.
We appreciate it. We love being your golden child.
Yeah.
I love it, too, because you're my community, so.
But maybe we could talk about naming rights.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all right, I better go.
Thank you, Lori, we appreciate it. Tough crowd tonight, sorry.
She's leaving.
No, she's leaving because her daughter has a softball game, we did not offend her. Okay.
Way to go, John.
Next, we'd like to invite State Representative Kurt Hanson, who's here this evening. Kurt, thank you for coming tonight, and giving counsel just an overview that was actually provided by Tracy Vance in an email last week, just some of the high points of the legislation for commercial property tax. We wanted to just get your impression about how you think local impacts are going to look like, and how the program is going to roll out. I realize we haven't really put a comparison yet to what our current taxable valuations, and how that may change, but I think it's something that we need to start to be aware of as we go into new budgeting cycles, so.
Well, thank you, Mr. Malloy, and members of the council. Good evening, guests. Tonight, paper headlined, a gentleman, a young man named Alex, over in the Civic Center, that spoke for 36 and a half hours for a new Guinness Book of Records. My expertise in property tax reform is not nearly that detailed, so relax a little bit. I'm going to make a few brave comments, and let you read some of the handouts here. Well, after a slow start, and overtime finish, I was very pleased with what happened at the end of the session. We came off with a, I think, a historic trifecta that involves commercial property tax reform, education reform, and mental health, and Medicaid expansion. So I think this is probably going to be something that will go down in the history books. And I'm very glad we didn't extend it another week, because in the tradition of the Iowa House, if you have a grandson or grandchild born, you're supposed to provide chocolate in the exact poundage of the child. And so last Monday, we were pleased to learn the birth of a grandson, and I'm very glad that I'm not over the chocolate factory.
Congratulations.
Nine and a half pounds of chocolate. Well, the impact on the commercial property tax is going to be different for each district, different taxing district. So talking with Sherry Blau-Neff this morning, and talking with our fiscal bureau, we really don't have any detailed scenarios for individual taxing districts at this point. I can give you some generalities. For example, a commercial property of a medium assessed value of, say, a little over $70,000, they would experience probably a taxing reduction of about $1,050 on that proposal. But if you take another commercial building, that's about $2.5 million on average, that would be a statewide, they would receive a total tax break of about $9,000, a little over that. That would be about 10%, whereas a smaller building would get about a 40% reduction. So we tried to target this to Main Street, and tried to make it so that people in rural Iowa, county seat Iowa, could really benefit for this. Because the fiscal service estimates are very, indicate that there'll be a very slight increase over the next decade, to about, that rollback in residential rollback will be about 52.8%.
And so that's going up a bit?
Yes, the rollback is going to go up a little bit. And the residential property is currently at about 54% to 56% of the property being taxed. So it's my understanding that the controls that were contained in the property tax reforms were designed to prevent a shifting of that tax burden, which is what we really, really were concerned with. Because if you think about taxes, generally, it's been explained to me like a balloon. You push it on one side, it bulges out on the other side. And that's been our problem throughout the 30 years they've been discussing this. So hopefully, we have something that's gonna be workable to you people. It also includes a whole new category of taxes, and that will be the multifamily residential units, the nursing homes, those kinds of properties. And so that's going to be probably looked at very carefully over the next several years. So we really have a couple of years to get ready for this. We have the 2013 data, and really, it goes into effect in 2016. So we'll have 2014 to evaluate it, and perhaps we'll need to see some reason to adjust some of the areas. So that's one of the things that I might tell you people to really look for, and suggest changes, if we see those are necessary. So we've also agreed to backfill any losses up to the 2016 level. So we hope that the state revenues hold up there, and we hope that we can keep that promise of backfilling, making you guys hold harmless to the property tax revenue that you're now taking in.
And that's for two years?
That's for two years, up to 16.
And then what happens after that, Kurt?
After 16, it's capped at that level of 16. And so at level of 16, then if the assessors, and the treasurers, and so forth turn in bills for more than that amount of 2016, it would be capped and prorated at that level.
So there would still be backfill, but it just wouldn't increase in value?
Wouldn't increase.
Okay, so you'll cap it.
So we'll cap it in 2016, is my understanding of this.
Okay. The idea is then, that like the new valuation, so in other words, this is dealing with current valuation, and then maybe new valuation?
Well, in 2016.
Yeah. That in the future, our increases wouldn't be as much as they would have been.
Correct.
But, but at least we're not gonna lose out what we have now.
Right.
That's the idea behind this.
And so I'm not sure how this is all going to come out in the total end, because there's gonna be a lot of different taxing units, there's gonna be a lot of different units with very high levels of multifamily housing, there's gonna be other communities with very low levels of multifamily housing, some with huge nursing home complexes, others without those facilities. And so one of the things that we were concerned about was Main Street. And Main Street businesses in a lot of communities frequently have residential units above them. And so the residential units were being taxed at the commercial rate. So this now means that you could split out those units, and the bottom half might be commercial, but the top half might be residential.
Currently, when you look at the multi-residential, triplex and above is commercial, so I guess that's what they're gonna use to determine.
Hopefully, hopefully. And so it's important that we understand that while we're talking about averages of all these cities, there's gonna be some classes that could actually go up. And so just because we're talking about commercial property tax rollback here, doesn't mean that each individual is going to have a reduction. Of course, there's an increase in credits here for individual property owners, and so those, I think we call them, home state tax credits, there's gonna be an increase in those, so that any homeowner should be cautioned to really make sure that they're checking with their assessor and their treasurer, to make sure they're signed up for those home state tax credits, because those are going to be increasing under this proposal. So those are some of the highlights. I think we've got a lot to learn about this, and I've provided you with some handouts here, and I hope I can get some of the handouts to the press and so forth, too. But I'm far from an expert in this area, and I depend on a lot of people like Kevin and Mayor Malloy, and you people here at the council, to advise me on these things. So if we have any more questions, or things that you'd like to talk about.
Great. Counsel, any?
Just to clarify, so, like you said, the focus is on smaller businesses, so the rollback is only on the first $145,000.
$145,000, that's correct, that's where we topped it, and that was a compromise, too. Because a lot of people thought that these rewards should go to the hometowns and the Main Street businesses, and other people thought they should go to the big box stores. And so we tried to have a compromise on that. And I think we did achieve a compromise that, you know, a compromise is, by definition, is something that not everybody agrees with, in fact, a lot of people are upset with, but everybody can live with. And I think that's what we have here, in three different areas: commercial property tax, Medicaid expansion, and school reform.
And Kurt, the property tax exemption for telecommunications property phases out, can you discuss that? What was the intention behind that?
A little bit here. So we're gonna create an exemption for telecommunications property, and that exemption's going to be phased in. So all of these things are stair stepped in, so that we won't have a full impact until everything comes in. And that's gonna give you people some time to adjust, and some time to look it over, and everybody to kind of offer suggestions. So in AY 2013, the first $20 million of an actual company's property is going to be exempted.
That's what it is.
Then they go to 20 million to 55 million, and we just keep jumping it up here. And so this is going to be phased in. And finally, in AY 2014, 500 million and above the actual company's property will be, will go down to 20%. So that's where we're coming from there. It's a stair stepping in, and I can provide details of that, too.
Okay.
I don't think those are on that.
Thank you.
And then the taxpayer credit fund, which I haven't mentioned, is going to be in the mix also, because as this taxpayer credit fund comes up to 30 million, then it's going to be drained, and that money is going to go back to the taxpayers, and then it's gonna be refilled again, as the revenues come in. So that's part of it, part of this compromise, too, that the taxpayers, individual taxpayers in our community are gonna be getting a refund, too.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Anyone else have any questions for Representative Hanson at this time? Kurt, thank you very much, we appreciate you giving us an introduction to this, and I know that we have resources available to us through the Iowa League of Cities, in doing a kind of a calculation on how it might impact us based on what we have this year, so I might ask Ways and Means to consider meeting with our city manager to, you know, to go through that at some point in time, you know, before the beginning of the year, just to get a flavor for what this may look like. What's that, no, I know, I just mean, before our next budgeting year.
Before the next budget.
Yeah, so, just sometime in the, in the next quarter or two. Next, counsel, we'll move on to our public hearing, and this is going to be for authorization of a loan dispersment agreement and the issuance of $3.8 million in sewer capital revenue loan notes. This is a public hearing, so I'll declare the public hearing open at this time. I ask if there's any public comment. Also, I'll ask if we've received any written comment on the, on the proposed loan.
We have no verbal or written objections, John.
Okay. Again, we'll declare the public hearing closed, and Kevin, if there, I know at our last meeting you did explain to the council what the use of funds are for this loans, if there's anything else you wanted to add before we consider the vote, go ahead and do that.
Just to recap, Your Honor, this is a P&amp;D loan, which basically, it's a development loan, do our engineering work for our projects, and then we wrap it into a construction SRF loan at that point. During the time that we're doing the engineering work, for the two projects, the facility improvements and our conveyance improvements, we won't pay interest. So it's a very good program from SRF that they offer. You do your research and development, and then you wrap that into a construction loan, and you don't have to essentially pay for that, so it's quite nice. City engineer Melanie is here, if anyone would like to hear anything from her about it. Any question?
Not, counsel, then I'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the issuance of not to exceed 3.8 million in sewer revenue capital loan notes.
So moved.
Moved by Hammers?
Second.
Second by Hallie. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Hammers?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to add to that, too, Your Honor, we will be having a future up and coming utility meeting to discuss the matter a little bit further, and more in depth regarding the fee schedule that we've been working on with McClure Engineering about the improvements themselves. That'll be an upcoming meeting, and we hope as many people from the public who can, can make that meeting, and look at that issue with us.
Thanks. Next, counsel, we'll move to a resolution to exercise jurisdiction over subdivision outside of our city limits, but within our extraterritorial limits. And Kevin, would you like to brief the council on what we're looking at?
Yes, this again, actually, John, you wanna talk about this at any length, or you wanna say anything about it?
It's real simple.
Exactly. We've been looking at a few of these lately, they're extraterritorial, meaning they're two mile, within our two mile distance of the city, but I'll let John go into it.
Yeah, this, this is about as, what they call a minor subdivision, it's about as minor as you can get, it's one split, there's less than four acres, they'll end up with two lots, Board of Supervisors approved it, it's outside of the area we would be likely to annex or to consider for servicing. And so we have two choices, we can just not elect to exercise jurisdiction, or we can say it looks okay to us. I'm probably in favor of you electing to exercise jurisdiction often enough that the Board of Supervisors is used to bouncing it off us in the two mile urbanized area that we have around town. Some of them have been, a couple of them in the last two or three months were remote enough, we would never get there. This one's a little bit different, but I just think you ought to just say it looks good to us, and the Board of Supervisors is gonna deal with it anyway, it's a closer debating city than it is to us.
John, I don't understand, you're telling us to exercise jurisdiction, but then to say it looks good to us. All right, what does that mean?
Well, our subdivision ordinance says that in our urbanized area, which is one to two miles around our town, we can exercise the ability to say there's some problem with it. If we thought that it ought to be subjected to a stricter subdivision regimen than the Board of Supervisors uses, we could ask them to do that.
So you're suggesting we don't ask for that, but exercise our jurisdiction?
Right, the Board of Supervisors treats it as a minor subdivision with no requirements for abstract comments on the chain of titles, certificates from the courthouse officers, other things that are in our formal city subdivision ordinance. So what we're saying is, if that's good enough for the Board of Supervisors, it's good enough for us. We're going to say, well, we took a look at it, and we're fine with what the Board of Supervisors did with it.
In this case. So regularly, we'll get these, we've been getting a few more, I think, than normal, but...
Yeah, we could say more, we're thinking this is simple enough, we don't want to say more.
Exactly. And in some cases, we, in one case, we, Scott Vaughn, our fire chief, had said, you know, be nice, you know, have some water here, we need an alley here, we need an alley here, you know, and they did that. We also said, could you do a 60-foot roadway, that was done. And so those were the only things, with this one, really nothing, so. We're setting a protocol, though, and a process. I understand, but it's still the idea of exercising extraterritorial jurisdiction. On one hand, we're not exercising any influence on it, but we're saying that we still want to consider it as part of our...
We want to be asked.
We want to be asked. We're telling you, we're exercising it right now. At the time, when we're, when we're asked, we don't have any problem with what's, what's going on, but we want to be asked.
Right.
Because, John, right now, there aren't any firm development plans on it, it's just...
Oh, I see.
You know, it's really just the two lots that we're approving at this point, so should something come forward, we would be able to review the development plans.
We don't foresee any objection at this point from what's been presented, but we want to have the ability to exercise any of our prerogatives. We're taking our ability to say we want absolutely nothing out of this, and we're happy with it. But we do want the right to be able to say that, or the opposite, we'd like to see this, we'd like to see this. So in exercising our authority more commonly, and yet, you know, probably not having a whole lot with any of, the ones we've had, we haven't had a whole lot with any of them to do. But it's just, we're communicating with them, we're setting up a process through which we can all shoot these things off each other as they come up.
Power to do something, power to do nothing, is how we sum it up.
Power to do something, but probably to do nothing, once you have that conversation. Okay.
Okay, now that that's completely clear. The developer is with us this evening, too, Kurt Kleinschnitz. If you have any questions for the developer, that'd be fine. If not, entertain a motion to approve the recommended exercise of jurisdiction for the subdivision.
So moved.
Moved by Boyer.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Boyer?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, counsel, we're gonna have a report on Logan Apartments. Kevin?
Yes, Your Honor, after arriving, we started a discussion, staff started a discussion with counsel about the different properties that we owned around the city, and one of those in particular was Logan Apartments. We have been working... We have been working on a visual aid, a map, where we're locating all the properties that we own on that map. And we are going to, at some point here, they'll be with pictures. We're going out to investigate all those properties, look at them, see what's there and all that kind of, that kind of stuff. It's not uncommon that a city at some point along the line will end up having an inordinate amount of properties, many of which it either has no business or would not have a want to own if it actually was well aware of how much that it had or whether it owned these things. So we're reviewing that, but the priority quickly came to the forefront of this particular property, Logan Apartments. And I'm here tonight to request that, pursuant to where I've sort of been heading in my conversations with council, I would recommend that the city sell Logan Apartments, although it is an income producer. It is in very good condition. It's probably in the best condition to sell that we're going to see it being at any due time going forward. I think it's a very valuable asset. The board has done an incredible job, our housing board, of taking care of that asset. And I think it's a good time to sell it for a couple of different reasons. One of those reasons is that for its day, when it was built and as we've owned it throughout the years, I think it was a very good model that public ownership of housing was the way. You know, I think that was a good working model. Things have changed since then. The way the federal government deals with these things has changed. The way state and local governments deal with it has changed. I think that today, currently, for our day and going forward for the foreseeable future, that the model is public-private. Private ownership with public assistance in terms of getting new housing created. It's our job to make sure that we have a plentiful and ample supply of public housing, or not public housing, but affordable housing for our community. But I don't think that that necessarily has to be public housing. I think that we can incentivize, we can find development partners and we, profit or nonprofit, there's several different types of those both out there, that we can incentivize those individuals or those groups, those businesses, to help us reach our goal without our ownership of that asset having to be the case, which saves us a lot of long-term investment. Of course, you have insurance coverage. You have upkeep and all these things. But many, many, many governments of our same size and larger are looking at this and coming up with the same thing, that that's the new model going forward, is more incentivizing and helping to create rather than actually owning and having ownership of that asset. And in our particular condition as well, looking at the shift of priorities that we've had over the last year that I've been here, and I think this, all this started before I got here, but that shifting of priorities has us in this position where this asset can provide great advantage to us going forward in the way that we've been looking at our changing priorities. So I guess that's how I would introduce it, but essentially, my recommendation would be to council that this first piece that we've been sort of entertaining or looking at, that we divest of that asset.
I would just also make the point that we've had discussions about potential revenues from the sale of this in our discussions with Ways and Means as funding some of the things that we're looking to do going forward. And the, you know, the general nature of the discussion has been available within the community enough so that residents of Logan Apartments were expressed the concern about the sale of the building and it no longer being available to them, as most of them are in a, in some sort of a Section 8 program for assistance for their housing. The commitment that we want to make going forward is that we will find a buyer who is interested in that type of property. I think that that's the most likely candidate for sale of this building anyway. There are investors that do specialize in these types of properties and those, that's the intention going forward that we will be looking for in terms of putting this for sale. I just want to make sure the council agrees with that also.
That's exactly right, Your Honor. And as well, we would look at this in terms of if you do a new HUD project or whatever, a lot of times you'll see the private developer is going to have a 20-year retention period for that. I think I'm going to be talking to, if we make a decision to actually sell this, I think I need to engage with John and we need to talk at great length about what kind of things that we can look at in a contract of sale. Could there be a 20-year retention requirement? You know, those types of requirements to make sure, indeed, to make sure that it remains what we need it to remain, which is affordable housing. We don't want to go down in our count of overall affordable housing here. This is not why we're doing this move. But of course, we're looking at expanding our investment in those things, but we don't want to lose what we have, so.
Okay, so what you're looking for from the council tonight, then, Kevin, is kind of authority to proceed with preparing for a sale so that as we receive bids, they would be reviewed by the whole council and a decision is going to come later. But this would be to proceed to advertising it and marketing it for sale.
Indeed. Seeing, putting out for bid and seeing what develops from that, yeah.
I think the only thing I would say is I do think it's really important in terms of, I think it's truly, it provides a real service to the community for the individuals that are, you know, are living there and have lived there in the past. And I guess, you know, I don't know how closely we can monitor someone who's perhaps going to be the purchaser of it. And I can certainly see why some of these individuals might be very concerned about it. And, you know, it certainly has, you know, over the years, has produced some income. And as I say, it is true, it's probably, it's in, I mean, basically because I had a reason to go and check out an apartment, which, you know, I've never really been in it before, but I did. And I was absolutely duly impressed with the condition of the building.
It's a well-maintained building, yeah.
I mean, it is really remarkable. It's been very, very well-maintained. And so I guess that's the only concern I would have is, you know, that someone purchases it that, you know, I'm not saying I'm opposed to it being sold, but I also have concerns about it being sold because, you know, if the wrong person were to get a hold of it, it could be a real disaster for the, you know, for the city, for the individuals who are currently living there and those who are looking for housing and things. So, you know, I think that it's kind of a double-edged sword. I mean, it's good to see us maybe move forward, but yet there certainly should be some real concerns about, about it.
I think that's true. We're going to be vigilant. We're going to have to be, we have to do our due diligence here and make sure that, you know, what security we can provide, we do that if we sell.
I mean, you know, once you sell something, you do lose possession. I mean, you can't exactly, you know, you can't make, cross all the Ts any longer once it belongs to someone else. And so I think that's the only thing that I have concerns about, very honestly.
So what's the process of ensuring that the new buyer keeps it the Section 8 or in that title the way we want it?
Ask John if he has any comments.
Yeah, I was going to say, John.
I don't know if you do or don't, John, but I'll put you on the spot.
I know some. Actually, there have been a couple of other projects in town, for instance, Calhoun, that have looked at the prospect of selling to some other kind of investor in the past. They didn't go forward with it because of some of the same kinds of concerns you're talking about back years ago. You can build into the contract with your purchaser most of the things that the city agreed to nearly 40 years ago. HUD isn't going to necessarily say it's the same as 40 years ago. As Kevin pointed out, it's a different world right now. But we can also negotiate our term similar to what we did with HUD before if that would be the pleasure of the council to try to make sure.
And for this property to maintain a HUD authorized property, the developer is going to have to satisfy a lot of their requirements as well. Otherwise, they're not going to, you know, have those subsidies.
Right, they have to parallel somewhat what goes on right now. They have a HUD handbook that all the residents are allowed to rely on as far as the procedures, the notices, the house rules and so forth. A private developer could have his own set of those things, but he'd still have to comply with what's in the state code and look like the same kind of operation that HUD would expect. And the residents, they, they're going to be entitled to some kind of assurance from us that we did something to stay close. So basically, we're pretty well along on our agreement with HUD. I believe we had a 20-year period followed by another 20-year period. And I don't know what the amortized balance is anymore, but I would suspect we're getting on the downside of the interest curve versus principles.
Yeah, and as well, you have to look at the market when an item like this comes onto a market. And you have either companies who are interested in buying individual pieces of that or companies that own many, many thousands of units of this and will buy these kinds of units in bundles of 50 or 100 bundled up in different communities around a region of the country. So, you know, when you go public with some, if you went public with something like this, the variety of buyers will be, will probably be surprising. So there'll be some larger companies and some smaller companies that do just that. And there may be, there could be, a lot of times, there are local folks who maybe want to get into some of that, too, local investors who want to get into that niche market, which is a growing market, so.
So when we market it, are we stipulating upfront that this is our desire?
Yes, we could, we entertain in our contract certain desires that we have from any potential buyer. We put that out in our marketing of it.
We can have a set of covenants that basically the buyer is asked to agree to, to as closely as possible emanate what we've been doing to comply with the HUD handbook. That doesn't mean that a private operator is necessarily going to be quasi-governmental or governmental like we are. Our Housing Authority Board is the closest thing to following state action, government rules as anything you're going to have in a housing authority board. And they always have. But somewhere in between that and a private operator is what we're going to be negotiating for. We set our standards as far as what we consider a suitable buyer and we'll have the council do the screening.
But just to pursue this a little further, John, let's say we have some buyer who makes agreement to these sort of covenants or whatever we're requesting here for the purchase of this property. And then two years later, three years later, decides that it's not advantageous to continue the subsidized housing thing and they're going to just revamp it and put in a, you know, do something different and then these people would have trouble. What would prevent them in the future? I can see after, they're just promising they're going to, oh, yeah, we like this idea. We're going to do it.
We can't bind them forever. The best we can do is bind them to come into it and transition using the rules that we want to apply.
Exactly.
The other rules that will be off here on the sidelines are our own Iowa landlord/tenant rules. And they're fairly fair in perspective of the tenant, in my opinion. And they're a default set of rules if a private operator doesn't have their own set of rules. So if we are specifying we want certain things from our buyer and we'd like an assurance that they operate so many years compatible with what we've been doing, and we know that in the background, we've also got the Landlord/tenant Act that applies generally, we can show that to our tenants, I believe, as an assurance that they're going to get due process, they're going to get notice, they're going to get opportunities to be heard and so forth, even under a new operation that isn't government-operated as our Housing Authority Board is.
But I think the likely developer interest that you're going to attract is going to be looking for that as part of their operational revenue for a building. And it would, if they were to change that direction, it would mean that much more investment and that much more expectation from the market for higher rents and things like that. It's a pretty big step. And I, you know, there are also, HUD also provides a place to list properties like this for people who they rarely do business with. And I know we'll probably list it in places like that, too, ensuring that we're attracting those types of people.
Yeah, I think the mayor's point is that this property would likely fit into a portfolio for someone who does specifically that and does it very well, and that's all they really want to do. They don't really do a lot of new development. They just go around the certain regions or the country nationally and buy these units for their, filling their portfolio, so.
I'd like to just make a comment about another aspect of this sale. And I, you know, I'd expressed it initially when this was discussed, you know, several times in our committee meetings. Just philosophically, I'd like the idea that the city has some kind of enterprise operation, something that collects money other than through taxing people. And this is basically, you know, one of the few things we have like that. Of course, we have our, you know, water department and our, you know, and our sewer department and all that. And so I guess we could consider that as our own municipal utility in some case. But for a number of years, I personally looked at, you know, Mount Pleasant and Access Energy and their enterprise, you know, the amount that goes into their general fund from having that enterprise is enormous and just kind of envious of that. And so I, my initial reaction was really hesitant to give up one of the few moneymakers we have besides taxing people. But I've kind of come to the point where I realize, you know, and Kevin's response was that to that was, well, we're not really, you know, should we really be in the business of being in business? You know, we're government. Do we need to, you know, let the business people be in business? And we'll collect taxes. And that's the way it works. And so encourage the private sector and as that grows, we will have enough resources to take care of everyone else. So it's sort of, I'm just kind of publicly saying, I've had this sort of shift in my philosophy on it and I'm not going to oppose this. So I just want to stay there.
Thank you, John. Any other questions for Kevin? Not then, we'd entertain a motion and feel free to put whatever you'd like in the motion as part of our discussion. But in terms of moving forward.
Make a contingent on the new purchaser following through on what we've already established.
Yes, and that we determine a timeframe or something for that.
We'll be bringing this, we'll be bringing it back to you for review before we go out with three minutes. So we'll have, we'll probably have another meeting like this where we're looking at it. And John, can you entertain questions you've got about what we've actually come up with?
Okay, so let's just take a general motion, then, just to move forward. And then we'll bring back, you know, any specific marketing materials or that will actually define how the building is going to be sold.
So I guess I'll move.
Move by Boyer.
Second.
Second by Hallie. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Thanks, Kevin. So, John, if you would work with Kevin on that, too, and just come up with some parameters that we can use to be sure that the market knows what our intentions are going out. Thanks very much. Next, council, in my report, I'd like to propose an appointment to the Board of Adjustment to replace Jack Bradley. Jack has served, you know, very well as committee for a long time and is going to be stepping down. Karen Hewitt is interested in serving in his place, so I'd like to ask your approval for Karen this evening.
I'll make that motion to approve Karen Hewitt for the Board of Adjustment.
Moved by Boyer.
Second.
Second by Revulinski. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Thank you. Next, council, prepared for you a list of some of the things that we're going to be considering over the next year to two years for our Blue Zone community policy strategy. And I guess you remember, after a number of sessions during the winter, the group that is kind of overseeing this, we call the Power Nine, has been working with Blue Cross, Blue Shield and Healthways to write what we call a blueprint for the community. And this is a strategic plan for our wellness initiatives through the Blue Zones Project. And sometime, probably in early July, we're going to have a kickoff event where we'll bring all of this information to the public and publicize the entire blueprint. As you remember, each of the different community elements that are included in the Blue Zones Project go through a process of certification. So you set out your objectives in this blueprint fashion and then as they are completed, you are certified by the Blue Zones Project as having completed that. Three weeks ago, we celebrated with Hy-Vee. They completed all of the qualifications for certification for a Blue Zone grocery store. Just last week, the Garden Restaurant, just on the corner over here, made all of their certifications for a Blue Zone restaurant. There'll be six or seven other restaurants that are going through the process. There'll be one other grocery store that's going through the process. Everybody's and they should be doing that soon. There are 20 companies and work sites that will be going through different initiatives as well, of which the city will be one of those work sites. So there's a lot that we have to do in that direction. But I wanted to go over some of the specific things that we outlined. And we did speak about this at one point, I think it was back in January. But this is, these are some of the timelines that we've given to them. And the reason I want to bring it up this evening is because I think there are some aspects of this that can go to the committee level for discussion to see how it is we will accomplish these things by setting new policy or redesigning some of the things that we do. And there are others that will, that will be done through city administration, but I... but I thought we would begin to look at those. So the first, on the, let's see, on the second page, where it talks about Plan of Action, we list the different areas that we agreed we would take action on. The Complete Streets Policy Pledge, Action Items One and Two. Complete Streets is a policy for putting, putting into place a policy that when we develop new streets, that they are pedestrian-friendly, they're basically designed in a way that everyone can use the street, whether you're biking, walking, or driving an automobile. Tobacco Policy Pledge, we have quite a bit of that in place already, if not having completely qualified for that, but we wanted to have that reviewed to see that we are in full compliance with, with that area. Healthy Eating and Active Living Actions, and I know that they're just numbers or points listed there, we'd have to go back to the full manual to see exactly what those are. Built Environment Changes. But in this, on the next page, which would be, it's actually page 18 because this is copied, but it's the third page, what you're looking at there, we have our action steps. On the 20th of March, we passed a resolution unanimously to become a Blue Zone City. We would like by October of this year to have gone through our tobacco policy, and if there's any updating that we need to do on that, to have that approved. Community Gardens Policy Approved. We don't, at this point in time, you know, we have a very active and robust local foods coalition, and we have a great farmer's market. We, we don't actually have community gardens at this point in time, which is a little surprising for our community. We've had groups that have approached us in the past about helping them to find some land where we, where we can do this, but I think this is one of the areas where we can engage and promote this and see if there are some areas where we can partner with people to create a community garden and encourage the use of community gardens. So that might be one area where we could begin to look and see if there's something from the committee level that would begin to investigate that, and I suppose.
I volunteer my committee.
Volunteering, environmental and.
I've already, I've already researched this somewhat.
Okay. So, great, Michael, if you would, you would basically get that on your agenda and begin to start to look at that, maybe some other community policies, how that's done, and then we, if we could work on that over the course of the year and have something that's developed by spring of next year, we'll be meeting our objective there. Outdoor Dining Policy, I think we, you know, we have a very basic policy of allowing restaurants on the square to have outdoor tables as long as they don't obstruct the sidewalks. I don't know if there's anything more broadly that we could look into as far as an outdoor dining policy, but I was thinking the Property Committee could take a look at that.
Also, your honor, when we come up to the consideration of comprehensive plan and zoning code type conversations, a lot of that will lead into that.
Yeah.
That's why I put that, that later, much later date on those things in 2014, and a couple of those.
But I think if we, if Property would begin to look at that, Tony, if next time we, you have a committee meeting to just research some of those policies that are there to see if, if we can get something moving in that direction. The next would be healthy vending standards, and that, I think, really addresses to all of our city buildings.
I think we removed the vending machines from our city buildings, parking wreck most recently, ours to begin with, and then parking wreck, right? But they adjusted what was in it.
Derek's not here, he's on vacation.
Okay.
They got awards for that, didn't they? They need to get some sort of.
Yeah, recognition.
Yeah, recognition.
Yeah, and we took ours out, so.
Okay. Well, okay, if we feel that we've reviewed all of our buildings, Kevin, I think maybe from an administrative standpoint, we could just leave that there with you to see.
I could come up with what he actually did and put that in paper as a policy, so that you could actually pass it with the other policies when you pass them all, you know, together.
Okay.
There's another aspect where you could limit vending machines in school zones, like even adjacent to schools. That's one thing Blue Zones mentioned.
That'd be something we're requesting.
From a city policy standpoint.
City policy, yeah.
Oh, just outside.
Yeah.
Outside the schools, actual property.
Yeah, like.
We don't, we really an issue here because there's not, there's not a lot of commercial that close to schools.
Well, there's one that, that a citizen brought to my attention, it's near Pence and the middle school, that the kids go to to get their sugar, the sugar fix.
And that's our, that's our structure.
Well, it's in, it's not on school property, it's on city property, so it's just, it's an idea, but, you know.
That's part of it, I think we just have to see what kind of tolerance there is for it. You know, there, there are a lot of options within some of the things that we choose to adopt as policy, whether that's as far as you would want to go or not, I don't know, but certainly with our, within our own jurisdiction, our own buildings is something that we can review and, and look at. And I don't know whether that would, that would include the Arts and Invention Center.
It would as city property.
Yeah, probably would, so, and I think there probably needs to be some work there.
To meet with the board.
Yeah, okay. Breastfeeding Policy Approved. I know that's probably particularly for Parks and Recreation, and I believe we do have, you know, a basic policy in, in place, but I think it should be reviewed.
Yep.
Okay. Complete Streets Policy Adopted, and I guess that would be Transportation Committee also working with our city engineer, and, and also understanding that this is probably going to be one of the key elements of our policy, of our code review going forward. Update of our master plan for Bike Way and Walkway. Now, this is a major piece, and I believe that what we have in place right now would qualify, but at some level, I'd like to see a comparison of what is in the ideal plan from the perspective of, you know, of a model code and what it is that we have. So Kevin, any suggestions about whether that just stays with administration, or would we like to have?
I think in some sense, we need to get involvement of a subcommittee with every one of these, so we're just moving along as pieces, and they all come with a good rounded recommendation.
Public, public safety and transportation, they would take a look at that.
Mayor, one note on this, is that when we did the Rag Right Pre-Ride, one of the guys that rode on the pre-ride was with the bike coalition, and he said our community is about this close to being a biking community and being, getting that award, so that might be something that we look at doing.
Great.
Because we're really close with what the things we already have in place that might fit in with the Blue Zone too.
Okay, terrific.
I think maybe, Julie, you know such much about it already, maybe you should spearhead the effort.
We're, yes, just come to the committee meeting.
We will call it, that's a good idea, actually. If we're that close, we definitely need to key in on it, because that's a good one. Yeah, you get on a national bike route.
So Public Safety and Transportation, we'll look at that. New Urban Garden Project, I think that probably comes under the Community Gardens Project, so Michael, if there is, if you take a look at that, see if there's any distinction between the two, and include that in what you're reviewing.
Sure.
Update zoning codes and mixed-use development, obviously that's, that's something that we have on our agenda, so we'll move that up, adopting form-based codes as well.
I would point out, Your Honor, we're not sure to what proportion we're talking about form-based codes in our new zoning effort. We're, we're very much still immature in the process of getting that going, so that, the form-based codes are on there, and we're interested in looking at all that, but of course, we have no preconceived notions.
Okay. The next area would be drinking fountains in parks, would be something that we, and Derek's away, correct? He's not, not here this evening, so if we could have Park and Rec Board and Derek maybe do an assessment of where we have drinking fountains and do an evaluation of where we might.
That's right. We've been, Your Honor, we've been engaged in that for a few months already, and I am pleased to say in our site planning of what we've looked at for Obie Nelson in the swing, but we have, I think, placed already two or three more fountains, like, to my memory, two, two more fountains in that park, in advantageous locations.
Okay. Good, then I suspect there are parks where we don't have them, so I think that we, we just need to take a stock.
I think that's true, yeah.
And see where we are with that, and talk about the development of those as well. And the final one would be complete, a Complete Streets construction project, and I guess we.
For the most part, Your Honor, we've been looking at that as a potential for the Crossroads Tiff development that we had been talking about for about the last six or eight months, and doing that project in that development, which, you know, not so grand a notion, if you really look at it, you're talking about some bike lanes in that street footprint, and you're talking about sidewalks on both sides of that street, so nothing too far-fetched, but we are looking at it in terms of that development, trying that out in there uniformly inside of that subdivision, the, the housing portion of it, so.
Well, I think we, we should probably also look at some of the Bike Way designated routes, because I think when we put that together, that master plan together, we said we would look at, you know, potentially doing some bike lanes in those areas as well. We haven't really done that at this point in time, so I think we might want to review our Bike Way, Walkway master plan to see about doing that, too.
We could, we could look at what might be some of our best priorities on the road-based level to be able to get that in there, and, you know, on the cost level, what would be the lowest hanging fruit there. We've sort of been edging around the notion of that anyway in our talks of our street reviews, but.
Right. So, great, so if we could get those conversations going and keep on track with everyone else, there's really a lot of work going on behind the scenes right now that, once we have this kickoff event, will be unfolded. Really happy with the way the community has responded, particularly the school districts have been very helpful in some of the things that they've taken on and adopted, some of the workplaces as well, so this is going to be a great effort going forward. The last thing I'll mention is that I think you all recall that when the Blue Zone Initiative first came up, almost two years ago, and communities were asked to, for citizens to go online and to register their intention to be part of the Blue Zone Project and take on one of the recommended activities that would help bring more wellness into their daily activities, that what happened, once we were selected as a demonstration site, is that we were asked to do that all over again. So part of it is that we have, now, I've got good news on that, though, John. Part of, part of what we have to do also for our certification is to have 20% of our citizens registered. When we went through this initiative the first time, we had 37% of the people interested. What we were able to do is to finally get all of the email addresses of the people who had registered within the community, so we will be sending everyone a message to please just simply go back and re-register again, so it, it should be easy enough to do, but I'll just make that point that if you were one of those that registered, go ahead online and, and get us started in that direction, and we'll have a big campaign to get everyone else going.
And how's that done in?
The BlueZonesProject.com, and there'll be, again, just a big button, register here, and you'll go on and simply take you three minutes. That's all I have as far as that report. Any questions regarding those items, council? But if not, we'll move on to committee reports. I know Public Safety and Transportation has submitted a meetings, a minutes from a meeting, is there a report?
Nothing really major to note, other than Don Sanders from the Jefferson County Alcohol Consumption Task Force came and visited us to talk further about his proposal to have retailers complete further education prior to either renewing or applying for a new license, and we decided that it, there was a lot more discussion that really needed to take place on how feasible that really was with high turnover rates, et cetera, and also about punishing retailers that are doing a good job and don't have issues. So we're going to have a public meeting, probably sometime in the summer, early fall, to invite retailers and figure out a solution and maybe a plan for that, so that's really all that was to note.
Okay, thank you, Jessica.
Yep.
Next, Water Sewer Utilities, I don't think Darren's here tonight, so.
I can give a short one.
Sure.
We had, we had no actions taken, we didn't meet and discuss increases on sewer and water bills to help pay for our large amount of work we're going to have to do in the next several years. We discussed a seven-step raise option and some other options, and we decided to have another meeting to discuss it further and get more options to come forward on rates, and so no action was taken. I believe July 17th is our next meeting we're going to have on that.
Yes.
Everyone to come and give, come and give your input, it's going to be a kind of a hot topic, I think, for a while.
Thanks, Tony. July 17th was the next meeting, and representatives from the engineering company who had built the recommended model over seven years were going to come back with some other financial ways to look at this, because they all do involve significant rate increases over time.
I have a question, just based on what was in the paper, because they were talking about 46 million total for all these projects.
It's an estimate.
You know, a year ago, it was 20 to 30 million, and we've doubled.
Three years ago was 18 million.
Yeah, it's not uncommon that when you look at huge utility projects like this, you're going to see your initial estimates, which are really your least informed estimates, you know, when you get into the analysis like we've done on this deal, hydraulic and hydrology studies out the wazoo for about the last year and a half, you find yourself being much more educated in the guessing you're making. And at that point now, that we know that what our flows are at our facility, we know the kind of improvements that we have to make, we know the kind of storms, sewer overflows that we're dealing with in a, in a much more real way, with, with real statistics, these are the estimates that we're coming up with now.
So you think these are reasonable at this point?
I think they're sobering, but I do think they're reasonable.
Beyond sobering.
Yes, they are, they're almost beyond.
They're shocking.
Well, the other, I think the other point that was made in the meeting, Connie, because I, I had the same feeling, too, is that in the early part of the reconstruction, you're going to find that you may have some things that alleviate the system in such a dramatic sense that there may not be as much to do going forward, or the cost may not be as great. So for right now, this is the projected estimate, but there is a way that, that the whole picture, scenario could get better.
I think that's very well put, there's an effectiveness of our efforts that's going to amalgamate, it's going to build upon itself. We feel like this first east side element that we're going to do first phase here is going to be very effective at removing SSOs, for instance, because we're doing those facility improvements, and we're adding in a really a great deal of storage. We're sitting on 10 million gallons of storage right now, according to estimates of the extra flow, storm flow that we have in our system, and what we feel is going to be the ability of our plant to take in material and to pump it up to our new basin, we're going to add about 20 million gallons of storage in those basins, with an ability to expand to 28 and have 38 million gallons. But we're covering basically the storm flow that's in our system with our storage, so our ability to pump it up and then let that stormwater basin flow our material back down to us at a time when it's not raining, basically, and we're surcharged, is going to make us very, very, very effective, we feel like. So the mayor's right, at different points along the way, the different efforts we're doing in-house, this, all this is going to add up very quickly, but it is a, it is a pragmatic estimate of the kind of improvements that should we go forward now and make the perfect improvements we should at the end of the line, you would have that kind of expenditure being done. But I would point out, very important to this conversation, is what we're considering now, since Darren's not here, and he made the point early on, is we're looking at projections of fee rate increases, right? We're looking at the things that we feel like we're going to take on, and when we feel like we're going to take on those things, those challenges. The first one, major facilities improvement, and the beginning of major conveyance improvement. So all we would be agreeing to right off the bat on a fee rate increase is what fee rate increase do we need to cover the cost of the activity we're doing right now? The rest of those fee rate increases are projected increases for projected efforts we've been undertaking at projected times. So we may be faster or slower in how we're able to take on those new projects, certainly we're hoping halfway through each project, we're planning for the next one. But those are decisions we'll have to make along the way. And the mayor's right in pointing out that those decisions could alter or change based on what's the situation at that time. 10 years from now, we'll be a different city. Five, we will be, according to what we're projecting as a result of these efforts. I don't know, Sean, if you want to add something to that, Sean's with us tonight, so if you want to step up and answer some questions about it and add some things, I think it'd be great. We can't talk about this too much, really, this is the most significant thing that we're doing.
Yeah, some of the first improvements that we'll be going through is at the treatment plan. We have, I don't know if, many of you have been out to see it, mainly our first star of the treatment plan, it's called our headworks, it's completely failed. We're, it's all mechanical, scraping bars, scraping my hand, our grid chamber is held up by the building now, that's the only thing left that'll hold it up. It's beyond repair. So once we get this taken care of in this first phase, that's several million dollars, it's just been neglected over years and years, it's met the end of its lifespan. So that's part of the first phase. Also with that is upsizing the main line that comes from the new headwork stand to underneath the new highway, 34, that gives us that much more room so we can get rid of this bottleneck that we have, where the east. that we have, where the east and west come together now, it's a huge bottleneck there, that's one of our major overflow spots, is right there. On a normal storm, that one could, well, on our, we had that big five-intraying that came, that particular overflow site put out almost a million gallons by itself. You start to get rid of these bottlenecks by that and get the pumps upsized, we get storage basins so we can keep it, that'll be the first one that we see greatly reduced, that'll probably be eliminated. So we're taking this first step, could possibly take 30 to 40 percent of the overflows away just in this first run. And then we are starting a new program, too, with in-house repairs. We've, just touching with this, we're starting to put a crew together, we're going to do some of our own point repairs now, we're getting qualified individuals, employees that can know how to do this, and through training and equipment, we're hoping to knock out a lot of the overflow stuff on our own, too, that'll help with this project. That's where, like the mayor was saying, where the price could come down, is with our in-house efforts, too, of starting to eliminate some of this.
We'll end up just south of Lambs and Woods in this effort, or I guess right at, I'm saying right at in terms of putting it in a general area, but right at Lambs and Woods is where we'll end up with this effort from facility to conveyance to that point. So, and hopefully, we'll be getting some, some maps and things like that out after our next meeting, so we get those in the paper and really get people to see what we're talking about in terms of maps with color on them, a lot of dynamics there, but this is a big chunk to bite off right off the bat, but when you look at after you do that facility improvement, big thing, that's, that's, you know, a lot of millions of these dollars that you, you break into small projects of around two to three million apiece in certain sections of conveyance, depending on how many you take on at once, but this first phase, of course, seven years, roughly.
Could be interesting for the press, Andy, I don't know if you've been out there, take some pictures, see the headworks, for example, the ancient decay of the headworks, very telling. Post those pictures in the paper, I think that people might start to understand what we're doing here.
I will point out that the possums that were seen last time, we're not living in the building, as reported in the paper, they were only visiting for a meal. I need to get those things.
All right, thank you, Sean, we appreciate it.
That was before present staff, I'm sorry.
We know there's a lot of hard work going on on that, and we know these are difficult decisions, and it is alarming, the rate that, that this is going to cost us, the community at this point in time, so we're going to do, do the best we can going forward. Next, Ways and Means Committee and Personnel Committee, they have a joint report.
You want to go ahead? Well, this was kind of a joint meeting between, so John did the report, so I think I should let, defer to Ways and Means, actually, that.
During the tenure of Jeff Claussen, the council resolved to commit to having our city employees, our full-time city employees, earn at least $12 an hour, a minimum of $12 an hour. As part of that process, Jeff Claussen set up a timetable to up, to provide raises to people who were under that, and most of those employees worked at the library. One particular employee was a part-time employee at that time, and after that resolution, became a full-time employee, her name is Janice Carby, Carey, sorry, Janice Carey, and she had gone from eight-something an hour and had gotten a raise and came up to 10 as of, no?
9:27.
Oh, and then, and then she expected that she was going to get up to, so she's currently at 9:27, is that it? And based on the timetable that Jeff Claussen had set and the understanding that, she was under the understanding that, that she would receive a raise every six months, stepping it up a dollar, or approximately a dollar each time, up until she got to $12 an hour. But under our new city administrator, you know, that, there was not an actual, anyway, that got left aside, and, and she did not get her raise that she had expected in, on January 1st. And so the library board requested that we consider giving her a retroactive raise, making up for that dollar an hour that she should have gotten, starting January 1st. And after considerable discussion, the feeling was that this is an unusual request, maybe not a good precedent.
Right.
To do retroactive raises, but we did sympathize with, with the situation, and so kind of a compromise proposal that came out was that instead of giving her a lump sum now to make up for the money we didn't give her, give her a little more, starting July 1st, in the new budget year here, that would bring her up further than, than she would have. In other words, she was expecting a raise to $10 an hour in, in January, she was expecting a raise to $11 an hour in July, and then a raise to $12 an hour next January. That was the, that was the timeframe that Jeff Claussen had set. And so we just said, why don't we just put her up to $12 an hour, starting in July, and that, that's more than she's expecting for the first, you know, for July to January period for, for 2013, and that, that dollar an hour extra is going to make up for the dollar an hour less that she would have gotten for the beginning of the year. And so our recommendation then to the council is to actually adjust her salary, starting in July 1st, to 13, 12 an hour, sorry.
It was quite unfortunate, this employee was not in that original resolution, it's just a matter of time, of course, because she did go to full-time right after that, and there are, you know, prior commitments on the library board level that, you know, kind of make this, one of those agreements, it fell through the hoops when you have a change order management, not uncommon, so I would concur, and we think this is something that will hopefully, and we're in agreement with the library board over that, hopefully solve that problem, and we won't have this problem in the future, so.
And it's noted that was in the budget, so it's not an issue with the current budget that we have.
No, it is, it is in there.
Well, and there was a question as to when she became full-time, that was the other thing that was somewhat confusing when we had our meeting, that actually, she did not, was not on the list to become a full-time employee until July.
Yes, and we're lucky, our librarian has covered it actually in her budget already prior, so it's not something that we're going to have to worry about being able to pay out or create money for, it's actually included in what her budget was for the year, so we were lucky there.
We definitely would propose that that's, would be council approval for going to the $12 an hour as of July 1.
Okay, so motion by Rasmus and second by Revolinski to approve the proposed hourly wage change for Janice Carey.
One point, yeah, I'd just like to say is, I read in the paper, or the online paper, some people were frustrated with our recent raises to city employees, and if we stopped giving so many raises, maybe we'd have enough money to pay for the sewer repairs, which we know, we know is not actually economically accurate. The answer to that is, if you pay your employees well, then you keep them, and you don't have to go through the retraining process when you lose them and get a new person, and our rates, our salaries for our department heads and such are not high for a small Iowa town, they're actually average to low in a lot of cases, so it's very justifiable for us to, to do these little incremental raises from time to time, and it's not breaking the bank or keeping us from our other responsibilities. I'm not preaching to you guys, I guess, I'm just talking to the public.
Jessica, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just had a question, so you're proposing that you do a raise every six months?
No, this will end her raises.
Okay, so you're just getting it all caught up at once?
We're getting it all caught up at once, instead of stepping it through as...
I think it was supposed to go year by year, though, not every six months. Isn't that right, Rebecca?
I don't think it, in the...
Was it, she's supposed to get a dollar every year?
Up to $12.
Every six months.
Up to $12.
So, so in 2015, she should have, would have gone to...
Not from the schedule we had.
Janice became full-time on July 1 of 012. At that time, she was given her first step up to 9. And then on January 1 of 013, she was to be stepped up to 10. On July 1 of this year, she was due to be stepped to 11. January of 014, she was to be stepped to 12.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those pose the same sign? Thank you. Let's see, RagBri report, Michael?
Yeah, the RagBri Executive Committee went to Des Moines a couple weeks ago for a meeting with all the other committees from the other overnight towns. Now, the executive committee is myself, Chief Harvey, Tammy Jones, Dennis Lopp, Tracy Vance, and Terry Baker. We found that we were on par with the other communities, maybe a little ahead in some areas, but not really behind in any, so it was a good kind of gauge to see how we're doing. And I basically want to give a report every council meeting before the event, because the city is the biggest donor at this point, too, RagBri. There is a misunderstanding for some people, it's not a city event, the city, there are a lot of city people like myself and, and the chief, and Jessica, who are involved, but, and Sean, and so many others who I've kind of roped into these different committees, but we're all volunteering. It's a, it's a standalone event that has to make its own way financially, so we, we're very glad the city put in $10,000, that helps a lot, county put in three, and some businesses have put in some money, but we have to raise the rest with vendor fees, t-shirt sales, and beverage garden sales that night, so we're working on our budget and trying to get everything hashed out, and just moving forward, just call for volunteers, and housing, basically, is what we're asking for now, so we need as many volunteers as possible for that day, July 26th, there are innumerable ways to be involved, so hear more about that later. And then also, if you want to open up your yard to campers and maybe let them use your bathroom facilities, that is also appreciated.
The other thing is, we did the pre-ride on Friday, and they said out of all the six towns they'd already, or the six counties that they rode through, that all the hard work that Daryl did and the county roads did, that we had the best roads, so, and added away to Daryl and the county road guys.
Great, thanks, Daryl, good job.
You want to add anything, Jessica?
No.
I made the call for housing, all right. But I figure since the city made the biggest investment, I owe it to you guys to give a report.
Thanks, Mike, we appreciate that, so, yeah, we will, please do continue to encourage people to offer housing for our guests for one night. I've also been working with the Beautification Commission, we have several projects in the downtown that are going to be taking place before RagBri, that will also in the area of beautification, and Scott Vaughn and I consult weekly on the condition of some of the properties along the route, so we make the best impression when people are coming in, and Scott's been working hard on that, too, and we appreciate his efforts.
And one more thing, I'm happy to announce that Mayor Malloy won the RagBri spelling bee contest. Got that second A.
Got that RagBri cheer down.
I don't know who this...
There is an A in Tater.
For Tater, but I've had a number of people very concerned about the large dead trees that we have on Burlington Street, that, and it really is concerning, I mean, there are several, and not only on Burlington, but several places in the community, and I don't know whether Alliant is still concerned about their lines, but if we had a really bad storm, I think we would not have any power, because we have a lot of dead trees, large trees that are in trouble, and I don't know...
They trim trees, I don't know if they take them down.
I don't think they take these trees down, but I am concerned, and I don't know what we do to get people to be aware of, you know, the danger, I mean, if one of these branches or limbs fell on someone, it could, or certainly damage a car and damage the person, so I, I don't know, but people are very concerned. I've had several people call me and say, what are you going to do about the dead trees in this community? And I'm like, I'm not in charge of dead trees.
If you do, if you do know someone, I would encourage council members and citizens, if you do know of a dead tree, we may not have it on our list, we, of course, do have a cut list, we go out and cut trees regularly, but please do call us and report that, or let us know on Facebook in some manner, because we may, we could add, that may not know that that's dead.
You just try down Burlington Street, you don't have to go too far.
But you're talking about right-ofaways.
Right-ofway trees, yes, actually, not, not private yard trees, but right-ofway, trees with a right-ofway.
And we don't, we don't have anything, we don't have any laws on the books that require someone to take down a dead tree that's in a private yard, do we?
Not specifically, no, if there's a, if there's a danger, or a dangerous tree, or that could be regarded as a nuisance type tree, certainly we could kind of approach that, if the personal property owner wasn't aware of it, for instance, you call them, let them know, but no, not really. There could be, if you wrote a tree ordinance requiring certain things, that's certainly a possibility, if you'd like to look into it, but currently not on the list.
Okay. All right, thank you for the report. Next, we'll move on to our city administrator report regarding our summer projects for streets, water, and sewer.
Yes, Your Honor, I would just draw your attention to the really sweet map and nice little write-up that we did for your, it's in the, it's in your agenda item there, we're going to be hopefully getting this description, a little article with the city engineer and our wonderful editor, to talk about these projects, just, I think it was a legitimate critique, and it's probably a legitimate critique in any community, that cities not do, you know, when the project's on my block, I don't know about, I don't know enough about it, and I'm not hearing enough about it, why is everybody here? So what we've decided to do is get this nice color-coded map, the one you're looking at here does not include a legend, we have another one that does, that will be printed publicly, that the legend color format shows you what kind of improvement's going to be happening in your area. Of course, exact timing is hard to provide, a lot of this stuff, we're going to be going out to bid for, some of it's in-house, I would say, this is all budgeted things that we're going to be doing throughout the year, capital improvements. And so I guess, just wanted to let everybody know that we are going to make a really big attempt to get out there to our public and let them know that we will be working for them and where that we will be doing that specifically. And we'll do other announcements in the paper when we get closer to, you know, to give a week or two primary call, so.
Thanks, Kevin, appreciate you providing this. Counsel, any questions on that list of projects for the summer? Okay, that brings us to our closed session, where we will have a private discussion regarding IO Code 21.5J, so we thank everyone for their attendance at the meeting this evening, and entertaining motion to go into closed session, moved by Revolinski.
Second.
Second by Ledger Callen, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those pose the same sign?